Thank you. Before we get started this evening, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Woodard from the Dare County Board of Commissioners. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thanks, ma'am.
And tonight's meeting is a little different than normal. Most of you probably are aware of that, but this is a public forum. We host this two times a year, and it's an opportunity to kind of have a little bit of a more casual, casual atmosphere where there really is not a set agenda. It's an opportunity for citizens to come and address the board on any item that they want. And unlike during public comment when it's, you know, you're rigid to stick to a certain amount of time, and then we have a structured response to public comment, in these type of forums, we actually respond right then. Or if it's people that want to talk about, if more than one person wants to talk about a topic, maybe they will come talk about that topic, and then we'll respond based on that topic. Or have a discussion with you on ways that we may respond. We may not have answers tonight. It may be something that we have to follow back up on. But this has been a valuable tool for us as commissioners to hear more feedback from citizens and then basically take new directions sometimes with our town. In past public forums, we've received information from citizens that we've been able to use to direct the Community Appearance Commission on projects that they've been able to carry out. So, anyway, we use this as a time for you to hear your concerns or your celebrations, things that you want us to continue doing, or things that you want us to look at addressing. We do ask certainly that we all come together in the spirit of we're here as a community to solve community issues and not in any type of destructive manner. But before we move forward with the public forum, we did have one thing that we wanted to add to the agenda tonight, and I welcome a motion from someone to do that.
I will make a motion for the Board of Commissioners to approve the agenda for this meeting with the addition of Commissioner's Agenda Item Number One, which is a proclamation for Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month, which is in November. So, I'd like to add that. And actually, I guess I would be making an agenda since we don't actually have one.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? Are there's a favor, please signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we will move on to Agenda Item Number One, which is the proclamation. I'll let you do the introduction if you don't mind.
Thank you. As some of you are aware, Healthy Carolinians of the Outer Banks has several task forces, and one of our task forces is a dementia Alzheimer's Task Force. And we've done several things with that this year, and one of the things we wanted to do is bring awareness to the disease. As Dare County is an aging population, this is something that we think everybody needs to be more aware of. So, with this, we are bringing this to the Dare County Board of Commissioners in November, and we will also be bringing this to several of the different municipalities. So, I'm asking that people see and know that more than 5 million Americans suffer from Alzheimer's disease, and it's a progressive disease, and I'm sure that most people in the audience have been touched by this. So, we just recently had an Alzheimer's Walk that was here in Kill double Hills, and we raised over $14,000 for the Alzheimer's Association of North Carolina, and all that money stays here in Dare County. So, we're doing quite a bit here. But I will read the proclamation if that's okay, or if that's appropriate. And, "The Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month for November 2014. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a devastating disease that affects over 5 million people in the United States and their families, and whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive disease, degenerative disease, and is the most common form of dementia, and whereas Alzheimer's disease causes deterioration of memory and thinking and erodes judgment and reasoning abilities. It also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to care for oneself, and whereas there is no cure for Alzheimer's disease, and whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death for American adults, and the fifth leading cause of death in adults ages 65 and older. Whereas joins individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the effects of Alzheimer's disease in promoting research to find a cause and cure, and in supporting educational programs and support services. And whereas the National Candlelight Lighting is an annual event sponsored by the Alzheimer's Foundation of America to remember and honor Americans who have been or will be affected by Alzheimer's disease or related illnesses, and whereas the Town of Kill double Hills supports the Alzheimer's Foundation of America Commemoration to honor those whose lives have been affected by Alzheimer's disease or similar related illnesses." Oh, yes. And I make a motion. Sorry. And I make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
You have a second?
Any other discussion or comments? Are there's a favor, please signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you, and thank you for bringing this to us this evening. Okay, so with that, we will move into the public forum. And we do ask for, I guess, to make it a little bit easier for, to pick you up on sound and to be able to hear, that you still do come to the podium to bring forward your comments this evening. And when you do, if you'll identify yourself by name and address. But that being said, where it is different from public comment is, don't feel like we're, you know, timing you to the minute of what you're sharing with us. So, there's really no rhyme or reason or order, so whoever wants to go first, just please raise your hand, and we'll call on you and welcome you to the podium. So, who's here this evening that wishes to speak at the forum? Somebody break the ice. It's okay. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Bob Burns, 212 East Archdale, property owner but not a resident. And just, this is a question, I guess. The beach refurbishing, just a status report on that, maybe, and also if there's any tax implications, financing, and so forth, if you can kind of elaborate. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and do that now. Bob, thanks for being here this evening. We probably, I would think, within the next meeting or two of our regular Board of Commissioners, will have former Commissioner Bill Pitt with us to do a presentation and a formal update. But I would tell you that where it stands right now, we're looking at a tri-town project for Kill double Hills, Kitty Hawk, and Duck that's being explored, where all three of the towns would be joining in at the same time for beach nourishment projects. Our project would start at the north end of our boundary line and go to, Debbie, I'm drawing a blank.
It's just beyond.
Prospect.
Just beyond.
Prospect.
It's right at Asheville.
Asheville. As far as, we're not looking at doing a townwide project. We're doing what's most vulnerable and what has been identified as the area in need of nourishment. The Kitty Hawk's proposed nourishment would be their entire town, and then Duck has a section of their town that they're looking at doing as well. The timeline for that is to possibly have sand starting to go on the beach in the spring of 2016. And while that seems like a long time away, that timeline is built around what it takes to get permitting. I mean, it takes eight to 10 months just to get permitting. So, right now, we are working with the county and with the other two towns on mapping out the funding plans for this. Commissioner Woodard's here and certainly knows the county is being a great partner in this initiative as far as helping with the towns with some of the funding. But there will be a tax implication to our town. Each town is having to do a tax increase to fund part of the share of the beach nourishment project. We have not specified yet, because we're still working on the calculations, exactly what the tax implication would be. If you think back to, if you're familiar with the Nags Head Project, they established special tax districts where the oceanfront property owners received a higher tax rate than they did townwide. We are looking at the possibility of a similar structure to that in Kill double Hills where we would be establishing a special tax district. Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I imagine that we will have those firm numbers to be presenting and sharing as we are entering this next budget cycle. So, I'm guessing in the February, March timeframe?
Yes, ma'am. And there would be letters going out to the property owners and the municipal service district.
So, that's it in a nutshell, but you may, that may have spawned more questions or more information and, or follow-up?
That's good. No, that's just, that's, that answers a question, basically, yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for asking, and I'm sure you're not the only ones that are near with that question and probably in the audience. So, like I said, within the next couple of meetings, we will have Commissioner Pitt back to do an overall presentation. And in that presentation, he'll actually be sharing specifically what the nourishment project would like, would look like overall, and provide a lot of details with, you know, you're looking at how much sand is literally going on the beach and what it's going to look like as it's projected out. So. And one thing I do think is important for all the citizens and visitors and property owners to be aware of is that we're going into this with the mindset that, yes, this initial project is a substantial project. But I think we're also going in with the mindset that we would be from day one, understanding that re-nourishment is a part of this. And so whether that's a five-year or a seven-year plan, that, you know, the goal isn't just to put it on once and watch it go away, that if we stay with enacting a re-nourishment plan, we can keep our beaches protected, you know, we can keep the size of our beaches and keep our properties and our infrastructure protected from here forward. Certainly, these are built around a model of, you know, you have a category five. That's, I mean, that's beyond what any of us can probably even fathom, but these are, these models are built for, you know, your five-year storms that we do see more frequently. Anyone have anything else to?
The area that we're referring to, Astral Street, just for the sake of orientation, is just north of our main bathhouse at Ocean Bay Boulevard. And that, the, where that actually, the southern part of that is a taper that comes from the main, the main area of nourishment. And as it gets south, at a certain point, it tapers into the beach to match up with the existing beach from that point south, so that it's more like a uniform. And the taper can be anywhere from 500 to 1,000 feet long. Also, another thing to keep in mind is that, once the project is in place, that FEMA regulations at present time allow for them to reimburse us for losses to the storms. And I'm not exactly sure on the, how that works, but in the past, various municipalities have received either all or most of what it's required to put that sand back. Now, natural erosion is different, and that's what the mayor referred to, is what we'll have to look at in five, seven, maybe again in 10 or 12 years. And that depends on the natural erosion. If we're lucky, in five years, it'll look the same way it did on day one, which isn't likely, but that's kind of what we're hoping for. But we'll be looking at it again, and the funding for that is going to be built into future budgets, and it certainly wouldn't be anywhere near, if we hope, the amount of the original project. So, and that's all from a layman's point of view. So. Anybody else have anything on that?
All right. Who else would like to bring something forward to the board this evening? Please.
Bob Woodard, 2305 Bay Drive. Mayor, I'm here to, just to give you and the board some kudos. First off, you just spoke about the beach nourishment. I know it would have been very difficult for KDH to do this on their own. And the partnership with Kitty Hawk and Duck is tremendous. As you very, as you stated, the county's ready to do their part, and we're excited about that. And very well needed and excited about this taking fruition. I'm anxious to hear what former Commissioner Pitt is going to bring to the board and get this done. So, my kudos to you for y'all's forward thinking to get that done. As you know, this is critical to the survival of Outer Banks. The second kudo is fantastic job on the sidewalks on 158. I know you've got another project coming soon, and hats off to you guys for doing that. It's been a great addition, helping certainly the, those that travel by bicycle to work, and especially in the summertime with the, with the students that are here. So, continue that. I know you've got some spring and fall projects, street and roads, so you continue to make that happen, and I congratulate you on that. The only, the only question, well, I had one question, but before I go to that, I'm glad to see that Commissioner Reubottom is the only one up there this evening that's in sync with ECU. I'm glad to see you got your cup up there. We play tomorrow night, so we got a great record going. But thank you, Brandy, for, make sure, make sure John gets a good shot of that. But again, I commend y'all. I would like to ask one question. The bike path, fantastic in front of my home on Bay Drive. I mean, Meredith, Plannin', you guys did a great job getting the funding for that from the Vista's Bureau, and I hope you're looking to do that next phase. I know that's going to be quite a bit more difficult to do because of the homes that are, that are in that section, but I cannot tell you how much that path is used. This summer was unbelievable. And it's still used at this time of year by a lot of folks. So, great, great job, and I'm really pleased to see that that came to fruition. So, I'm anxious to see how that next phase goes. But congratulations on that. Thank you. If you can maybe fill me in on that and let us know how that's coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Woodard. As far as the bike path, the remaining phases along Bay Drive or the multi-use path, we actually established this past year when we adopted our budget, we established a sidewalk fund, so to speak, because we were receiving, not only do we know that we need to or would like to complete the multi-use path along Bay Drive, but we also were starting to get requests for additional sidewalks along US-158, possibly along 12, and then also on some of our heavily traveled neighborhoods. So, you know, First Street and some of those. So, what we did this past year is we, please correct me, because I'm speaking totally off memory, I believe we allocated $100,000 and established that fund and set the guidance for future boards, so whether it's us sitting here or not, to encourage that type of commitment. And we also have recently put in an application for funding with the Tourism Board for a project that if we receive funding, wouldn't be until the next year. Now, while that funding was specifically allocated for further construction along 158, the vision is that we would establish this fund, continue to contribute into that fund, so we can then have the Street and Special Projects Committee help us prioritize of all of these sidewalk initiatives. How are we going to tackle those? Just like right now, they prioritize our streets and what work that we're going to do in streets. So, that's anyone else on?
Well, I just want to thank you for being doing it at the county, especially on this beach nourishment thing and what you and your colleagues are doing. And I also want to give you kudos to yourself and your board members that went through our, really worst of our economic times, and how you handled things during that time. You got us through it okay. So, appreciate that very much. And I think that, I think in a way, it made our job a little bit easier, so hopefully. So, thanks for that.
Thank you. Bob, is your hands up again?
Get up there, or should I? Well, actually, just to follow up to the bicycles, I think it's a wonderful job. And, you know, getting the community to be more bicycle-friendly, I think is really important. Comment I have, though, that there are no bicycle laws, or helmet laws, I'm sorry. Is there some thought about that? I don't know whether that's a state, county, or local jurisdiction. I would just suggest that, you know, all the jurisdictions that I'm involved with, you know, have helmet laws, and I think particularly for the children, you know, I think is a critical factor. So, just comment on, or question, is that in the works?
Yeah, and Dana sees me eyeing him to help us out with this. Dana is our Assistant Police Chief, and I know, you know, we've had some questions about that as well. I'm the first to bring that up. You want to share?
And for. How you talk pretty loud about coming up here. For the bicycle laws, anybody under 16 years of age are required to have helmets now. And town council and all, we've tried to enact parts of it to our town code for the sidewalks itself for them to wear their helmets. There's no state law now requiring anybody 16 or older to wear one. That's a bit for your state legislators to pass that. But our council has done all they can to try and make it nice and safe for the general public when they're out there on the bicycles, both on the road and on the bicycle paths. Anything else in particular that I might be able to answer for you? And anytime you come by my office and talk, doors open, come on by, I'm there behind the computer. I'll be able to answer any way I can. Any others?
What's Jack's last name?
McColl.
McCombs. Jack, our bicycle guru, isn't here right now. Recovered from a bicycle accident. But.
He was wearing his helmet.
Yeah, he was wearing his helmet, and it wasn't his head that was hurt this time, but he had an accident a few months ago. It wasn't his fault. Somebody pulled into the driveway at one of the hotels, and they got kind of tangled up. And he made it very clear to our, talking to us here at one of our meetings, that the helmet really saved him. And that's, that's good. I mean, my wife and I ride bikes, and I confess, we don't wear them. We don't ride those real fast ones. So, even if they were, they wouldn't go fast.
Yeah, I'll concur with that and say that Jack was wearing his helmet, but he did sustain a head injury and was in ICU for several days. So, it's a very good thing that he was wearing that helmet, because it probably would have been much, much worse had he not been. So, he'll be the first to tell you that. But he's on the mend, but I don't think he's on the mend well enough to be at these meetings yet. I've seen him twice since then, and it was the end of September was his accident.
I was referring to the injury to his ego.
Oh, oh, well, no doubt. But it was, it was definitely helped by the fact that he qualified for Nationals, and I'll continue to say that, because he told me he saw the meeting and was glad that I mentioned that. So, I'll, I'll repeat that one more time, that he did qualify for National Senior Games, so he'll be able to go there. So.
Pretty remarkable.
Absolutely.
Yeah, he's made a big difference with, whenever he has an opportunity, he gets up there and talks about it. And it does make a difference. It's, it makes you think about it more, and especially when it comes to the kids, like Dana said, it's, it's something that they need to do, and we all should be doing.
Speaking of kids, my two boys, I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old, and they were at our skate park, at Aviation Park, and collided. One was on a bike and one was on a scooter. And, you know, they were okay, but my oldest got up and he came over and he said, "Good thing we were wearing our helmets, Mom." I said, "Absolutely." So, anyway, we were all okay, but I loved, I was music to my ears when he didn't say that.
Is that the night I was there, after I left?
Yeah.
I'm sorry I missed that.
Okay. Who else would like to bring something forward this evening?
I didn't see any pitchforks or torches when we came in. I thought it might be a kind of a calm meeting. Anyway, tell us something good, something bad, something we should be doing. Come on, I know, you always do.
I'll share something good or bad.
There you go.
Our Assistant Public Services Director, Tony Patrick, he and his wife had a little boy yesterday afternoon at Outer Banks Hospital, Samuel Anthony Patrick, weighed six pounds, and everybody's very happy. So, we have a new employee in public services department.
That's great. That's wonderful news.
I'll be calling the mayor on this. You could just like remind everybody about Moms this weekend, with the dental clinic coming through.
Absolutely. Thank you. We'll do a little public service announcement. Many of you may be aware, but this is the sixth year for the North Carolina Missions of Mercy Dental Clinic in Dare County. That's hosted each year at, around the corner, at the Parks and Recreation Facility. And this is a two-day event for anyone that's in need of dental services, that doesn't have means to afford those services, can come and receive. They do cleanings, extractions, fillings, and they can even do some minor, minor lab work. It's an amazing community event. Over the past, well, on average, we serve anywhere in those two days between 600 and 800 people. And we have volunteer dentists from, certainly within our community, but also across the state and even into neighboring states, that come and donate their time. From dentists to hygienists to a few oral surgeons even come and join. And addition to that, there's over 200 local volunteers that come together to make this event happen. Commissioner Reubottom and I have served on the committee for the past six years to help plan this event each year. We serve with a remarkable group of women that dedicate their time to bringing this to, to our community. And it couldn't happen without all the volunteers we work with and without community partners. And, you know, Dana, thank you for bringing that up. But Mark and Dana, you guys are out there each year. We also have security that Kill double Hills helps with. The county helps in a tremendous way, not only with the facility, but with, with some additional resources. So, I think they still may be looking for volunteers. So, if you have any time available, we actually start setting up tomorrow. They basically transform the gymnasium at the Parks and Recreation Facility into an 80-chair dental clinic. And if you haven't had the opportunity to see that, even if you can't volunteer, you should come out and just see the amazing work that's happening right here in our community. Thank you for bringing that up. If you would like to volunteer, you could see Brandy or I after the meeting, and we'll connect you with the volunteer coordinator. Thanks. Well, anyone else? Because otherwise, you're going to have to make this a really short evening for us.
I mentioned at the last meeting, and some of you, I think, were here, that I had an opportunity to have a ride along with the Police Department a couple of weeks ago, and I spent about five and a half hours with David Lastner Pierce, I'm sorry. Yeah, Officer Pierce. And I intended to stay a little longer, but I had forgotten about an engagement that I had that evening, and I had to cut it a little bit short. And I planned to do it again. And it was, wasn't much going on. It was the middle of the day and the middle of the week and off-season, so it wasn't much going on. But I really enjoyed it, and I learned a lot. And I was impressed with the, his expertise, number one, and the amount of, the quality of the equipment that we have with the computers and the radar was fascinating. They can get you in any direction, any time. They don't have to be coming towards you. You can be behind them or in front of them, or it doesn't really matter. So, we had a couple of stops and it wasn't anything serious, but it was, and it's something anybody can do. You don't have to be a commissioner or member of staff or anything. And I highly recommend it, if you get an opportunity to do it. It's fun and informative. So, just contact Dana or the chief, and they can arrange it for you.
Anyone else? Anything to share this evening?
Well, I would like to give thanks to the Police Department for taking care of the speeder down Holly Street. I really appreciate that. He's going, you know, well over the speed limit. well over the speed limit. That's taken care of now, hopefully. Thanks.
There's not me in the goodbye where I don't say something. Colleen Omeny, 113 Port Hill Court. I think that in the past couple of years, the town as a whole has done a great job of getting in front of the public. I think having the Facebook page is amazing, I think that the Outer Banks Mile post picks up the town posts and forwards them to their distribution list in a really funny way, I think is a great way to bring attention to things. We still don't have a lot of bodies in the room, and for the life of me, now that I've started to do it, I can't understand why more people don't come, because it can be a lot of fun. And last night, for the planning board meeting, we had a nice full house, because there was something going on in town that scared people. They didn't have all the information, they wanted to come in, they wanted to speak out and make sure, as one of the speakers said, everyone does their civic duty. And I'm wondering, as a board, what thoughts you all have about trying to get more people to come? One thought that I had when we had the ice cream social, we talked about what a great turnout it was, and I thought, wow, we should have had a booth, you know? You could have had the town manager and the mayor and a couple of commissioners wearing name tags, talking to people who were just walking by, maybe handing out some literature. I just think there's such an opportunity to create some involvement, and I was just wondering if you guys had any thoughts about that.
Thank you, Colleen.
That sounds like a pretty good idea.
We get to ice cream at the meetings.
Actually, it's margaritas.
I've mentioned that before. Well, Dana.
My name is Chris Shea.
No, actually, it's funny, when you're thinking that, I was sitting here going, your idea is a good idea, and I was like, well, how do we make that, instead of waiting a year and doing something like that, but perhaps we do some type of social in conjunction with the meeting? So, it's, you bring people out, and we have food at a meeting, you know, like a social, but we actually do it and conduct business at the same time, so they could see a meeting in action. Because I do think for some people, it's still an intimidating process, and I think they may not, even though we really, truly try our best to make people feel comfortable, I understand, it's still uncomfortable coming and speaking at a podium and in a formal environment, so I think if we could come have that social at the same time we do a meeting, where they see we're human, we're just like everybody else, that it is okay to come and talk to us, and that's how we do our job better, is by hearing from the citizens. So, maybe we could look at one of our meetings, actually doing a social here on-site, and then come everybody inside and sit down and see what a meeting's like, take that idea in.
When's our November meeting?
Anything about turkey dinner?
Yeah, something similar.
Christmas caroling in that meeting.
That would be fun.
Time to make a big turkey.
So, well, let's work, we have some creative staff as well, so maybe we can work with them to take this concept.
Especially if they're serving margaritas.
We're going to ask you permission on that, every town manager wants the statute. But anyway, why don't we take that idea, kick it around a little, and then maybe even by the next meeting, share some ideas and get board consensus on trying something like that.
That's a good idea.
I like that idea, Colleen, and I like the idea, I've talked a lot about the fact that in September, we spent a lot of time between September and October doing a lot of community events. It seems like every, every single group that does something tries to do it then, because of course, you know, the tourist season's kind of dying down just a little bit, and so everybody's, that's when we're gearing up for community events, but I like the idea of trying to do something geared around the family as well, because I think, again, the younger you can get folks involved, the more they, the more they can learn about it. Now, I realize they're not going to be super enthusiastic, and I'm speaking from current experience on this, about, you know, coming to these meetings, but...
She can't even hear that.
Yeah, that's my child sits in the back of the room, on her iPad and earphones. But I do think if we can get the families here, A, that does encourage people to come, because they're not losing their family time, and B, it does get more involvement there, and I think it makes them more comfortable as well, because I do think it, and if we don't do it in conjunction with everything else that's happened in the last couple of months, if we pull a timeframe out where maybe not everything else is happening, we might get more people here. So, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, real quick, I think also, even though there is a lot of things going on in September, you know, these swing seasons, if you want to capture some of the property owners, say like myself, their families and everybody else in that period of time where they're down here, because when you get into November, December, a lot of people close their houses down, they're not down here. So, I think you have a whole group of people out there that you should bring into the...
I think invite the kids in, pizza party, I mean, that's always a big draw, you know?
Good ideas. Okay, who else has something they wish to bring forward this evening or discuss with us?
I'd like to recognize Chris Shea and Sue Kelly are here tonight from our Community Affairs Commission, and Chris is also a member of our planning board now. Congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you all for appointing me.
Yeah, well...
Put you to work last night at a big meeting, you and Chip and the rest of it.
I was not run out of town on a rail.
Yes. That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, these folks have done some good work for us, and we also have, I was chair of our long track committee, and we've been working on some things back there, and it looks like, in case anybody hasn't heard about it, we're going to be probably moving forward on the first aspect of that area back there, we're going to try to get a disc golf course put in. It's going to be funded primarily by donations and sponsorships, and hopefully grants from various sources, hopefully the Tourist Bureau or the Visitors Bureau, I guess, and we have a couple of people very, working on that very diligently and very enthusiastically. Our good mayor's husband is one of the, Daryl's one of the people that's moving that forward. We have some engineering expertise on there and some disc golf expertise, and Daryl's enthusiasm is kind of moving things along, so I don't know if the spring or early summer of next year may be too optimistic or not, but I think that's what we're going to shoot for, and I think it's going to be something that's going to, a lot of local people want to do it, and there's a lot, it draws people from around the area also, so there'll be some other things hopefully to follow that, sign front boardwalk perhaps, and some, obviously some hanking trails, which are something that doesn't necessarily cost a lot of money to put in, or do use a lot of volunteer work to do that. And there's some other things back there, if anybody wants to get any more information on that, you can email me or anybody on the board, or anybody at the town, and we can give you some information on where that project is going. And the other thing I have before, speaking of civic duty, early voting starts tomorrow, so, and then, of course, it culminates on the 4th of November, and it doesn't matter what you think, who you like, who you don't like, the fact that you're out here tonight, most of you probably do vote, but pass the word along to your friends and try to get out there, it's very important, as we all well know, because that's how we got here, so.
Anyone have anything they want to share?
I do want to say something, as I was talking earlier with someone, it seems like people always come to meetings to bring up something that they want or to talk about things that they are a little disgruntled about, but I just want to say kudos to the town staff. I have never worked with a better group of people, and I especially want to say thank you to Mary, you did a wonderful job. I threw this Alzheimer's thing on her yesterday, and, I mean, she jumped on this and was there very quickly with this, and I, it's just, sometimes we take things for granted about how wonderful the staff is, but we have an exemplary staff here in Kittle Hill Hills, and I have yet to work with anybody in any department that I have not been 100% pleased with. So, the planning department is outstanding, I mean, you are constantly answering my questions because I know nothing about planning. The Police Department is constantly working with me in my daytime job, and y'all are always on top of things, and the Fire Department has done some wonderful things, buildings and ground, y'all are just everybody. I just, I just want to say thank you to everyone who works here, and tell Debbie, you do an outstanding job, and I don't think people say that enough, so I just want to say that in this public forum, and thank you all.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir, welcome. If you don't mind coming up and...
I don't mind a bit.
Great.
I'm Poggy Worsley, and according to my tax bill, I have my share of property here, and I have a little interest in it tonight. I'm a general contractor, have office, corner of Durham and bypass, and I, as you would, as Brandy was talking about employees, I've got two employees I like to go and give some attaboys to, and they're in public works. One of them is William Gray, I've interacted with him numerous times, and very professional, represents the town very, very well, returns phone calls, everything that you would expect. And there's another one, I don't know Tote's last name.
Turner.
Turner, first-class guy. He will, he returns phone calls, he goes the extra mile, that type of thing. But as I talk, talk about public works, there's one little rub I've got, is that if I'm pouring a driveway, we got weather coming, and it's 1:15, and I call public works for inspection, well, you got to wait till the next day, not the next day, but the inspection will be done the next day, and then you go for it. And sometimes I seem very much concrete, and sometimes it's not, but if they could take that and work with that 12:00 noon cutoff, I think it's still 12:00 noon in it, to be a little flexible, particularly at the time of the year, and I know their workload detects that, but if they could just maybe say, okay, well, I know it's going to be freezing tomorrow night, it's going to be raining or something, and we can get it on the ground before noon, you know, just little things like that. But anyway, I just thought I'd give William and Tote an attaboy.
Thank you, thanks so much. Thanks for coming out. All right, gang, anyone else?
What's the next public forum?
Any forum.
Speak now.
And for those of you who are watching this later and did not make it out, you saw how much fun it was, we laughed, we talked, but anyway, but you don't feel like you have to wait until a public forum to address the board, you know, anyone is welcome at any of our regular meetings, like I said, even though it may seem intimidating, it's not our intention to do so, so we really do encourage people to come out and speak with us and share what's on their mind, but also you can email us and you can call, so it's our goal to be responsive and to serve our public. We really genuinely appreciate those of you who did make the time commitment to be with us this evening and to share the comments you did have. Thank you so much.
There's some important things coming up, and all of it doesn't always make the newspapers, so, nothing personal, Bill. No, well, I know you can't, you can't put everything in there, but we've got, there's a project for, proposed for a hotel in, back in this area around Bermuda Bay, and that's something the planning board dealt with last night, and we don't know where that's going to go. And also, there's a proposal to change the floor area ratio for buildings on the ocean front, which if, if it's reduced, which it looks like it may be at least to some degree, that will reduce the size of the buildings and the mass of the buildings on the ocean front, so that we can continue to have that, so it's not all crowded up and you can't see, and there's shadows on the beach at 3 o'clock, so we're going to try to see what we can do about that to maybe get that down to a more reasonable level, and these are important things, and there's other important things too. Obviously, beach nourishment and probably every, if not every meeting, at least every month, we're going to have, we're going to be talking about that in some way, and that can keep people up to date on where the project is, who is going to affect, who's going to affect the most, get an idea beforehand of what the taxes may look like and the total cost, and what, as we get our reports from the other communities that are involved, and we can forward that on to you. It's important to get in, as we've learned from past experience, a lot of times, either you hear about it on the night we're supposed to make a decision, is when the room fills up, and we would have liked to have heard about that along the way, as it was being discussed in previous meetings, or as it was being discussed at the next lower level with the planning board, and we have to make a decision with all these people in the room, and if you try to keep up with what's going on, I think people feel better about their government, and it certainly makes our job easier. So, those are just a couple of things that I mentioned that are coming up, and they're very important, and we would really appreciate your guidance, appreciate your guidance, not just here and not just at the meetings, but send us emails, letters, whatever you want, Christmas cards, I'd be happy to hear. That's about all I have, I think.
Anything else?
I will do one footnote to the early voting. We talked about that, but we didn't, it's changed a little bit, and because we're an early voting site at the bomb center, I will give you the times on that. It's now 10 to 4, it used to be 10 to 2, and they used to do it for several weeks, and now it's only, it starts tomorrow and we'll go through the 31st, so the timeframe has shortened, but the hours during the day has lengthened, so it's good for people who try to get there and have a harder time. It's still in the middle of the day, but there's, there's no break in there for lunch, so any time between 10 and 4, you can be there, and that's your off-site locations. If you go to the actual Board of Elections in Manio, they're opening 30 to 5, so, just for your information. And that Monday before the elections, don't try to go early vote, you can't early vote that day, so we have, I can't tell you the number of people that come in that day to vote, so just FYI, that's not a day, that's a day off.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you for reporting it.
Motion to...
Be in tomorrow's papers.
That's it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying hi.
Hi.
Thank you, thanks again.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
All right, Brandy.